The City of Bristol, providing beautiful parks, economic development, and a family-friendly community.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the joint meeting for June. This is a meeting of both the Board of Finance and City Council to deal with items that have previously been before both boards. The first item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America, a true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda is the approval of minutes of the regular joint meeting on May 11th.
Move to approve second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any conversation? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The second item is the Consent Calendar, items 2A through G. Are there any items that appear on the consent calendar that any members of the joint meeting would like to pull out for further discussion? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 3 is to transfer $827,795 from the Equipment Building Sinking Fund contingency account for the purchase of capital outlay for various departments.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 4 is to transfer $1,345,063.62 of uncollectible taxes, $799,904.87 for motor vehicles, $385,282.16 for supplemental motor vehicle, and $159,876.59 for personal property.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 5 is to make an additional appropriation totaling $3379,013 within the Special Education Grant Fund funded by grant revenue.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'd like to make a point of order. Could we take this meeting off mute? We can't.
Okay. Hold on one moment. Can you hear us?
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Ron. I forgot where I was. Did I? Did I? All right. So, item 6, to transfer $30,000 from the General Fund contingency account to the Claims Deductible Account.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 7 is to make an additional appropriation totaling $160,000 within the Capital Projects Fund for the Memorial Boulevard Bridge replacement.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item 8 is to approve the resolution appropriating an additional $1 million for the Memorial Boulevard Bridge reconstruction project for an aggregate appropriation of $4,100,000 and to waive the reading of the resolution but include it as part of the minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Okay. This is a roll call vote. We'll start on my far left and do the dais, go to the audience, and then go to the screen. Yes.
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 Okay. Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Burns?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution is approved.
Mayor, how about you?
Oh, yes. Item 9, to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance of bonds, notes, or other obligations in the amount of $1 million to finance the appropriation for the Memorial Boulevard Bridge reconstruction project for an aggregate borrowing authorization of $4,100,000 and to waive the reading of the resolution but include it as part of the minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Okay. Same drill. Resolution, roll call vote?
Yes.
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 Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Burns?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution is adopted. Agenda item 10 is to make an additional appropriation of $273,361 within the General Fund for COVID relief funds.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item 11 is to make an additional appropriation of $209 within the Community Development Block Grant Fund for COVID relief funds.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 12, to make an additional appropriation of $515 within the Sewer Operating and Assessment Fund for COVID relief funds.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 13 is to transfer $150,000 from the Capital Projects School contingency account to the Green Hills Legal Fees Account.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 14 is to make an additional appropriation of $750,000 within the Capital Projects Fund.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 15 is to approve the resolution appropriating $1,530,000 for the replacement of the Memorial Boulevard Park retaining wall and to waive the reading of the resolution but include it as part of the minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Do we need a roll call on this, Terice?
Yes.
Okay. All right. With no discussion, we'll move to roll call.
Yes.
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 Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Burns?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution. An aye vote, yes. Resolution is adopted.
Mayor, can I get, who got the second? I know Councilmember Han was the first. He made the motion, and the second was, thank you.
Okay. Item 16, to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance of bonds, notes, or other obligations in the amount of $1,530,000 to finance the appropriation for the replacement of the Memorial Boulevard Park retaining wall and to waive the reading of the resolution but include it as part of the minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Yes.
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 Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Burns?
Yes.
And the mayor votes yes. Resolution is approved. Item 17 is the monthly revenue and expense report presentation by Controller Diane Waldron.
Good evening, everyone. Couple of just updates to the report that I handed out last week to everyone. As you can see, our tax revenues are still coming in strong. One of the things in the timing of when we run this report for you, it didn't have all of May in. So, I've kind of been keeping a track on some of the revenues to see once we had all of the May revenues in, how it looked, especially this time of the year. So, what you see is you, your report had 99.7% of the budget collected on the current tax revenue. Actually, through the end of May, we were at 99.9. So, that's all, you know, very good. I think the Tax Office does a great job collecting on taxes, and it's even more unbelievable, really, when you think of the year that we've had with the deferral of taxes, and everyone is paying, and we will meet budget on the current tax revenue. So, that's very encouraging. Prior year tax revenue is pretty comparable to what you had reported. It was 112, we were at 112%. We're now at 114 through the end of May, and same thing with motor vehicle stuff. There wasn't that much of a difference. But, I thought the current tax revenue, it was, like I said, it was very encouraging to see that right now we are at 99.9% of the budget. And I think that compares to where we were last year through the end of May as well. Building permit revenue right now is at 137% of the budget, so again, very encouraging numbers there. And conveyance fees also at 195%. There wasn't too much of a difference when I looked at those numbers through what was not yet posted on your report, so those were pretty comparable through the end of May. Investment earnings, same thing. We are very behind on budget there. We're at $234,000. Police extra duty, actually, there was a little bit of money that did come in at the end of May that was not posted. You had $1.76 million, so we're at 208% of budget compared to a budget of $850.00. We actually have almost $1.9 million collected in that revenue. So, those revenues are coming in strong, so it's showing that the contractors that are, have those services are paying. One thing that I do want to note, Councilman Kelly actually had a question comparing that to last year, because I do that in all the other revenues. Last year at this time, our revenues was $1.2 million compared to a budget of $650,000, and I think this year it might be because of COVID. I think last year there were probably a lot of projects that were put on hold, because to have $1.9 this year and $1.2 last year, that is a pretty significant difference. Bottom line, though, there is definitely a surplus on the revenues that we're collecting versus the actual expenses for the private duty. So, that will be helpful towards the year-end surplus. With regard to expenditures, we are at the 11-month mark here. A couple of things just to point out, we actually have the auditors here already, and they are working on doing their preliminary work. But, as part of that, we start in our office just trying to get everybody to get all of their year-end purchases in. So, everyone right now will have all of their purchase orders in by June 21st. That's the deadline that we gave them, and invoice is by July 16th. I have a goal that I want to have the transfers to the Board of Finance for their August meeting, so we could start closing everything out and have the auditors out here. So, that, right now, is the timeline for that. On the expenditure side, there's not too much of concern at this point. I will say, in prior years, we've had a lot of contingency left over, a good portion of it. Right now, based on what you just approved tonight, there's going to be $655,000 left, based on a budget of just, I think it was like $965,000. So, we did use a lot of that contingency this year, which I think we had probably talked about that when we were doing the budget as things came up. And then, I think I had mentioned in another meeting that the compensated absences because of retirements at the beginning of the year is also at like $1.2 million that we will need to cover. But again, that will happen with all of the year-end transfers. On the, let me see if there's anything else I wanted to mention on that. I think that was, you did approve tonight the final transfers of the COVID expenses through the end of December. So, all of the money that we received from FEMA and from the coronavirus relief funds through December have now been allocated to all of the departments. So, a lot of those, if you're looking at the expenditure report, a lot of those over expenditures for COVID, the COVID line items, those will be all cleaned up by the end of, after this meeting. We'll post those. We did receive our 50% of the ARPA money, $8 million. We received that, I think, last week, two weeks ago. We did submit today for 50% of the county allocation that we will be getting, the county allocation that will run through the state. It is not a direct to the city, is $11.6 million. Based on the call I had yesterday, we are, it is anticipated that the state will send that out to the cities and towns by the end of June. So, we should have an additional $5,822,098 by June 30th. So, that will be something to plan for. And I know the ARPA task force is meeting tomorrow, so they'll want to start planning on what those funds will be used for. And I think that's all I wanted to cover. If anybody has any specific questions?
Are there any questions for the controller?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any other business proper to come before our meeting? Seeing not, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are going to start the council meeting in about two minutes. So, we will do the transition up here from Board of Finance back to City Council, and we'll ask those that are on screen that are joining us, they can stay on this call. This will be the same call for the City Council meeting.
The recording has stopped.
Thank you. And for those of you that are in the audience, just bear with us. We'll get started shortly as we just transition over to the next meeting. We're going to start with opening ceremonies, and the first order of business is for the Pledge of Allegiance, so please join us.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America, a true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You will also notice we have our pride flag displayed here in chambers since we were unable to do our usual outdoor Pride Flag Day raising in front of our police department in City Hall tonight. So, we will be putting that flag up tomorrow morning for the month of June. Our moment of reflection is for those members of the LGBTQ+ community who have suffered any indignities or anything that has made them feel not inclusive in a community in which they live. Thank you. The first item on our agenda for business is for the City Council to introduce themselves. I'd like to start on my far right.
Peter Kelly, Second District.
Greg Han, District One.
Scott Rosato, District One.
Dave Proleski, District Two.
Brittany Barney, District Three.
Mary Fortier, District Three.
And I'm Mayor Ellen Zappo-Sassu. For anybody who will be speaking at the podium tonight, and as well as for my colleagues on the dais, please remember to speak closely into the microphone so that those who are joining us online will have the opportunity to hear the discussion tonight. The first item on our agenda is the approval of minutes of the regular City Council meeting from May 11th, the public hearing on May 13th, and the special City Council meeting that was held on May 17th.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any concerns or questions on any of the sets of minutes that were distributed? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve all of them collectively? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is public participation, and we are going to lead with our nonprofit showcase that we do occasionally. And tonight, it is my pleasure to introduce Tamara Bros, who is the new Chief Professional Officer of the Boys and Girls Club, who's been in the position now for about two years, two months. Must feel like two years, though, doesn't it?
A little bit.
So, we'd like to officially welcome you to the community. You have a great organization that you're the head of that has done so much good in our community, and we look forward to working with you. But, tonight, it is my understanding that you have brought a special guest that we would like to hear more about.
I absolutely did. So, first, thank you for allowing both myself and Brianna, who I'll introduce in one second, to come and speak with you guys. As I think everybody knows, the club does a Youth of the Year every single year. Last year, we were very fortunate to have the National Youth of the Year, Josiah's. And this year, so far, Brianna is still within competition, because it goes through many different levels. But, she has currently made State Youth of the Year for Connecticut, and she's moving on to the regionals, which are coming up in the next few weeks. And I'll let Brianna tell you a little bit about her story, because she definitely has an incredible one.
Welcome, Brianna.
Hello. Okay. My name is Brianna Parker. I've been with the Boys and Girls Club for about nine years now. I started when I was nine. So, the reason why I pretty much started was I lived with my grandmother, and she had worked a lot. She worked a full-time job, and it was just me and her. So, she decided that it would be a good idea if I joined the Boys and Girls Club. I was definitely not a fan of doing that, because I kind of always stayed home. I, you know, I went to school, but I didn't really have made any friends, and I just wasn't excited about something like that. But, when I got there, I didn't know that I'd begin like my whole entire future there, because now, nine years later, I'm the Connecticut Youth of the Year. So, I definitely enjoyed this whole entire process of becoming Youth of the Year, from writing the essays to doing the speeches, to just meeting everyone along the way, and, you know, gaining all the support that I have this whole entire time. But, I do want to talk about, you know, my platform and what I plan to do in the future. So, my platform is, I always wanted to be an advocate for drug abuse and anything to do with that topic. Not many of you guys know, but when I was 15 years old in 2018, my mother had passed from a drug addiction. So, she had struggled with drug addiction for the majority of her life, and mine. Both my parents actually struggled with the same exact thing, but unfortunately, it was fatal to her. She had overdosed a little while ago, like I said, in 2018, and from there on, it kind of was something that I became really passionate about, something that I knew I wanted to change in the world. I just definitely want to be an advocate and help out anyone who is experiencing it, not only if it's just you experiencing it, but if it's your family, if it's your friends, if it's just someone that you know, and they, you know, they're struggling with it, you need to speak up, and you need to tell somebody. Because even though I was probably a little too young to understand what was going on, I definitely wish that I knew more about it. Sometimes I think, oh, that was probably my fault, you know, I didn't do anything about it. It's never your fault, but if you know you can speak up about it, you definitely should. Of course, we all tried to help, and the situation was a little tricky, so it's, what happened is what happened. But, I know from now on that my platform right here is I want to help anyone struggling with drug abuse or drug addiction. I never want to see what happened to my mother or my father happen to anybody else. You know, I don't really speak to my father. I don't know what the past or the future holds for him. But, I do know that, you know, what happened was very unfortunate, and I just don't want anyone to go through that. Kind of, I'm sure everyone knows, it's kind of seen as the normal now. People doing drugs, children are doing drugs, teenagers, adults, like it's not anything that's like crazy out of the ordinary. You see it every day. And it's just something that shouldn't be done. You know, I know in our community, I see it a little bit, and it's just something that needs to change, because it's just, it's not something that you want to see. It's not something that should be happening. So, I definitely want to be an advocate for that, and I know my platform at the Boys and Girls Club will definitely help me, you know, be that person to, you know, even for the kids, you want to start them young. You want them to understand, because even when they're in their household, if they see what you're doing, they may want to do that. Or, they may, they may just think, oh, that's the normal. Like I said, you might see it outside, you think, oh, that's the normal. Someone's just, you know, smoking, doing drugs. It's not the normal. It shouldn't be the normal. So, you definitely want them to know that at a young age. So, that's definitely what I want to do. You know, I love being at the Boys and Girls Club. I've been there the majority of my life, and I've learned, you know, amazing things. The mentors I have met at the Boys and Girls Club are amazing. I've never, you know, second, like second-guessed myself. I always love being there, and it's just an amazing feeling, and I'm just so happy that I have that organization in my life, because if I didn't, I really honestly have nowhere, no idea where I'd be. And I know everyone says that, you know, oh, if I didn't have the club, I don't know where I'd be. But, my whole entire life revolves around the Boys and Girls Club. They pretty much helped me with absolutely everything. You know, I was struggling recently due to some personal issues, and I had moved out of my grandmother's house. I had really nowhere to live, and that was for a couple months. You know, I was couch hopping, living in my car, doing things that, you know, you shouldn't be doing at my age. I was 18. So, you know, not things you should be doing. But, I actually, Ms. Nicole, who's at the Boys and Girls Club, she's one of my mentors, she had gotten in touch with a couple people, and, you know, something awesome happened, which I am, right now, I do have a stable place to live, thanks to Mary, actually. So, yeah, I really, it is really, I'm really thankful for, you know, everybody at the club, everyone in the community helped me so much, because, like I said, if I wasn't at the Boys and Girls Club, I think you can guess where I'd be. I currently do work at the Boys and Girls Club. I work full-time at the front desk, and I also work at Chipotle, Mexican Grill. I worked there for full-time as well, but then I switched to the Boys and Girls Club. So, I do have two jobs. I'm looking to go to college this spring, or I'm sorry, this fall, for social work. So, I did get accepted to Central Connecticut State University for social work, so I'm very, very excited to start that. I did get a good amount of scholarships from the Boys and Girls Club, which I'm more than grateful for, and I can't wait to, you know, forward my education. Definitely, if I do get regionals, I will definitely get a good amount of money, and, you know, that will all go towards my school, and that's the only thing I'm really looking into. You know, I just want to be involved with school. I want to be involved with the Boys and Girls Club, and I know that that's never going to change for me, because, like I said, it's my whole life. So, I plan on working there for a good majority of my life. Thank you again for the chance to speak, and I look forward to hearing the rest of the meeting.
Great. Thank you so much for joining us.
I have a question of, Brianna, if I can, Peter Kelly, I read your story on the website, and it said call, and congratulate you, so I did. Do you remember that?
Yes, I do.
Yeah. I mean, and I'm just so impressed. Adults couldn't handle what you have. And, you know, it's impressive, and I'm blown away.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Yeah. I always try to, you know, look forward to the future, and I know, you know, just giving up is not going to do me any good. You know, I have people to support me. I have people right behind me, and there's no point in giving up, because honestly, I know I can do amazing things, and that's what I plan to do.
Well, I think in addition to what you're going to do in social work, inspirational speaking may be in your future as well.
Thank you so much. I, you know, actually, I thought I was terrible at speaking, because I've never done it before in my life. So, this is, this year was the first time I've ever publicly speak, so I'm just very nervous, but I'm working on it.
You're a natural.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brianna.
We do have one more speaker for public participation, Mr. Lepito from Redstone Hill Road. I bet I know what you're going to be talking about.
My name's Tom Lepito. We live at Redstone Hill Road. Been here before. Oh, Mike, yeah. I have a petition that was signed by about 45, 46 people that live on the street, and were all very, very concerned about the speed and the truck traffic on the road. I don't know. I don't know. Everyone I spoke to was like, why bother? It's an exercise of futility. I've been here before, done this before, not really getting too far with it. The speed has stayed the same. Truck traffic has increased. I'm talking tractor-trailers, talking jake brakes. I know there's a sound or a, I forgot what it is. It's a lot, it's when you can start heavy equipment and things like that. But, at all hours in the morning, at night, these trucks are coming down the road, the brakes are coming on. I've lost electrical connection in my fuse box. I don't know how to have, through vibrations, and I talked to another neighbor, same thing happened. People having stuff fall off the walls, it's hung on the walls. The road is just torn to shreds. It's not in very good shape. I don't think it's to accommodate that type of traffic. Going out to the mailbox, if you don't have mirrors on your head, you're, you know, you may get hit. They're flying by, the trucks are going by, people taking lefts, people taking rights. We've got eight egresses onto the road with eight streets, people getting out of their driveway. When my neighbor, new neighbor just moved in, wife pulls out of the driveway, doesn't back out, pulls out onto Redstone, starts going down, someone passes her. I mean, it's incredible. It's like, the number of trucks that are going down the road, different types of trucks, garbage trucks, tractor-trailers, it's like, I don't understand it. There's three alternate routes. There's West Queen, there's Pine Street, there's Route 72. There's other ways to go east-west to get to Middle or West Street. But, obviously, it's a GPS thing. I don't know what you can do about the speed, bumps, something, but it's a disaster. It really is a disaster waiting to happen. And, you know, the other day, there was an accident at the bottom of the hill. People with kids, I spoke, they don't know where they can put, where their children to take the bus, and the kids get off the bus. It's like an experience. Out of the 47 people Out of the forty-seven people that I spoke to, or forty-eight people that I did get around to, there was one person, one person that just refused to sign the petition, I have it here, I'll, I'll give it to you, but, uh, for what it's worth, uh, there's a lot of concern about the safety, the quality of life, the, that we are experience, experiencing, um, noise pollution, you name it. Um, anyway, don't want to take too much of your time, but it's still there.
Okay.
And I'll, I don't know who to leave it with.
Uh, you can leave it with me, so, um.
This is copy, you can have the real, the real.
Okay. Uh, Mr. and Mrs. Lepito have come before the police commission and we've had this issue addressed by the traffic authority. I don't, I didn't know you were coming tonight, so I didn't refresh myself with what we did with that traffic report last time, but I know that there's issues because it's a cut through, the Plainville Route ten cut through to get to, unfortunately, or fortunately, depending how you look at it, we've had a burgeoning economic base grow around you, which was different, as you and I have discussed, from when you bought that house in the seventies.
Forty-some odd years ago.
Right. So the accommodation is, is that they don't want to go to, um, Pine at Middle, they don't want to, they want to avoid the lights. We've seen this in other parts of town, traffic, and I'm sure my colleagues will attest to this, is the number one complaint, discourteous driving, distracted driving, it's, it's, those phone calls are all we get in terms of that truck traffic and it's happening in different neighborhoods. So I'm not going to stand here and tell you that I have an answer for you tonight, but we will revisit this with the police commission, which meets next Tuesday. And so we will bring this back. My concerns are the cut-through traffic and the type of trucks that are traveling on Redstone Hill Road. Um, that could be something that we can look at again. And if you recall, when you were at police commission last time, we did arrange for the Department of Motor Vehicle Truck Enforcement Unit to come out to your area and gauge kind of what types of trucks. I don't remember the statistics, the chief may remember, but I know that there were quite a few stops that they made and there were a lot of issues that they saw that they documented. So we'll revisit that report and we will deal with this next week at the, um, police commission meeting and then I can, I can get back in touch with you.
Super.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anybody have any questions or?
Yeah, I, I do on that, on that, um, the speeding issue, as, as she said, speeding is, is throughout the whole city. I serve on the police commission, um, and, and that was actually on one of my notes for this week's, uh, uh, topic is to get with chief and we've talked about it several times.
One, one suggestion, just for ha-ha's, but coming down by Memorial Boulevard, I'm not familiar with the street, but I should be, there's a, um, solar speed sign that tells you how fast you're going.
Mm-hmm, South Street.
Now, to me, that's like a lock on a door, it keeps honest people within the speed. I go, I see that and I say, oh my, I'm doing fifty miles an hour, I should be doing thirty-five, I slow down.
Right.
Some people won't, but something like that at the top of the hill, or the middle hill, or the bottom, somewhere in the hill, maybe that would, that would put off some of the speeding. I mean, I don't know how expensive those signs are, I've seen them up and around, but, uh, I think they, I think they work.
It is, and it's.
Might have experience.
Yeah, and the conversation can get really, really in-depth and not enough time for tonight, but, but the police commission meeting, um, we're definitely going to take some time on that, that is one of my, um, things that I really want to focus on a little bit, um, but just, just so you know, we aren't putting the Band-Aid on it, we are really looking into this and, and the chief is doing a, a pretty good job at it as well as, uh, you know.
There's other things.
Yeah, so, but, but we will, I, I can assure you, we will address it. Um, the one thing that I just want to kind of just point out there is, you know, we talk about the quality of life of what our council is trying to do for, for our community. Um, unfortunately, speeding is an individual issue, it's, it's up to the individual. Um, in, in my regards, I look at myself sometimes, I'm, I'm a slow driver, but everybody needs to play their part in the community as well and we know that and, and that's what I'm going to push for is, is everybody please be cautious when you're driving, especially around the Little League fields this time of year, summer times, the parks, um, we really, really have to be cognizant of our own actions too, so, um, I just, uh, we'll get back to that at the police commission next week.
Stay on the trust.
So, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Lepito.
And if I could just add, you know, Mr. Lepito did bring up the installed speed meters, I've seen those in other communities and I agree, I think they're effective, I think we talked about this the last time the Redstone Hill Road traffic came up and uh, probably like early twenty nineteen, or early twenty twenty, late twenty nineteen, uh, when we were discussing Redstone Hill Road and we had some, some, uh, things deployed there to kind of measure speed. I, I, I think it's worth looking into, I know that we have one, but I think that that's an easy solution.
Yeah, we, we are actually stacking up on some additional deployment mechanisms that are, if they haven't already arrived, they're due soon, so we can make that a, one of our first areas.
Okay, and just curious, cause I'm not on the police board, like, is there, what's the current fine for speeding, is that something that's regulated by the state or is it regulated by the city?
Depends on how fast you're going.
Sure, I'll have Chief Gould come to the podium.
Hi, good evening.
Hi.
Uh, that's regulated, uh, by the state and it depends on the, uh, miles per hour that you're going over the limit, so it can be like from one to ten, ten to twenty, twenty to thirty, and it moves up in, uh, charges as well, traveling fast versus speeding, um, it all depends on the speed you're going.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I mean, I guess if we had higher speed limit fines for an infraction, people might be more aware of it because it's a, a bigger deal, but if it's regulated by the state, then that's not something that we can do with this council, so.
But, you know, I, I think Councilman Rosado hit on it, it's, it's a level of personal responsibility, I mean, we've had, um, some stops, we, we've been doing enforcement for bus stop violations and I went to a couple of bus stops and it was amazing to me that the bus stops, the sign goes out, the lights are flashing, kids are entering and you still see bus, buses being passed. I mean, I don't know where people have to go in such a rush that they can't stop for a bus stop, but if that, to me, is the lowest level of dangerous and discourteous driving for people who are just self-involved, but I think you see that throughout, from speeding, from people using neighborhoods as cut-throughs, distracted driving, the texting issues, I mean, it's, it's really an epidemic and so that's why it's so challenging because there's just so many elements to it.
Yeah, so no, that's a good point, so now, I'm sure this is for the police board to talk about, I know that there's a traffic division that would handle it, do you think that it's appropriate to maybe even like start looking at some sort of commission that's focused on decreasing, you know, these speed related, related incidents, because it is a quality of life issue and you're right, it's like changing personal behaviors, but nobody's listened, not, not to be, you know, but there's five people on the meeting, so like, they're not listening to us talk about this. So I don't know how you get that messaging out there more broadly.
Well, excuse me, I have a suggestion, um, I drive the speed limit. If, if a majority of people drive the speed limit, it forces other people behind you to do it and it's unnerving because people tailgate you, no one drives the speed limit. So if you get a core of people that, that does and sets the example, uh, people either, either have to go around you or through you, they have to drive the speed limit, so perhaps incrementally, that's a start.
For sure.
I think Scott and I can take these concerns to the meeting next week and we could actually even ask Lieutenant Moskowitz to go through some of the professional traffic associations and see if there's any good marketing material out there that we could possibly adopt and review here.
For sure, I mean, like, we have the farmer's markets upcoming, we have the ARPA box distributions, you know, reminding people of maybe the fines or the, the repercussions or, because unfortunately, people that do that aren't, are already not thinking about other people because they're being discourteous in their own neighborhood to their own neighbors and their children flying by. I live on a one-way street where the speed limit is twenty miles per hour, where I see Attorney Tom, uh, Conlon walking sometime on his, uh, lunch and I hope nobody clips him one time because people fly down the wrong way or race each other somehow down the street, so it even happens in my neck of the woods in a, a place you wouldn't think it's happening.
It's in every neighborhood, for sure.
Yeah, it's, it's everywhere.
Be ready, chief, next Tuesday.
I've got lots of phone calls, so.
We're, we're, we're going to have a good meeting next Tuesday, okay?
I can come for emotional support if you'd like, but I think I've offered enough comments tonight, so you probably don't want me there, but I appreciate it, thank you for listening.
Okay, so that concludes our public participation, um, we're going to move into announcements tonight and we have a very special recognition, it's not often that we give out our All Heart Awards, but we're doing several tonight, um, to a group of young women from our Dennis Malone Aquatic Center and I hope everybody's recognizing tonight that all of the youth that have participated, starting with our flag-raising, um, guest speaker Jennifer, to Brianna, and now to our lifeguards are all girls, so girl power tonight. I'm going to ask, um, our superintendent of Parks Recreation Youth and Community Services to come to the podium to kind of give everyone a little summary of the sequence of events that occurred at Dennis Malone Pool a couple of weeks ago.
Great, thank you. I'd also invite Raylin Andrews, uh, to the front as well, Raylin is our aquatics coordinator and I also want to acknowledge Jamie Klout is on the call, Jamie is in charge of the pool, um, running our aquatics division, she's there now because someone obviously needs to be in charge, because we have a lot of our, our leads here in the chambers tonight, so I just want to shout out Jamie and her assistant Raylin for, uh, being here as well. So on Saturday, May twenty-second, I received that dreaded phone call from Jamie, our aquatic supervisor, that there'd been a serious cardiac emergency at the Dennis Malone Aquatic Center. A pool member had come out of the locker rooms expressing that he didn't feel well and collapsed in our lobby. Our staff immediately sprang into action, checking for breathing and a pulse and this man had none. The team activated our facility's EAP, Emergency Action Plan, called nine-one-one and began CPR. After one cycle, they used our AED, Automated External Defibrillator, to deliver a shock to the heart. Sudden cardiac arrest is among the leading causes of death in the United States and more than three hundred and fifty thousand people are expected to suffer a cardiac arrest this year, according to the American Red Cross. The only way to restore a regular heart rhythm during a cardiac arrest is through the use of an AED device and to use it quickly. In fact, each minute that the defibrillation is delayed, the odds of survival are reduced by ten percent. So with that in mind, I was so proud to announce that when Jamie's call on that Saturday, her report was that our aquatics team had been successful in saving this man's life. So let's, round of applause. So their quick response and textbook skill that these aquatics professionals displayed on that date is the reason that patron is still with us and in our community today. So I did want to point out a few things about this event, first, the mayor stole my thunder a little bit, but the team of lifeguards and aquatics personnel were all female, so let's acknowledge that first and foremost, girl power. Second, a save like this really is a credit not only to these individuals, but really to the training program that we have here in the aquatics division of the Parks Recreation Youth and Community Services Department. Um, Jamie, Raylin, our entire supervisor team implement routine in-service trainings, EAP practice, skill building and more, twelve months out of the year, in order to ensure that we're prepared for an event like this one. Um, and I think it's clear that the training has paid off. So with that said, I would like to invite the whole aquatics team that responded to the incident to come forward and receive the All Heart Awards, um, High Honor of Service in the City of Bristol, presented by the mayor of the city, Ellen Zapposasou.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to give out seven of our All Heart Awards and they read, uh, presented to everyone that's going to be standing up here tonight for your vigilant and life-saving response to help save a pool patron's life at the Dennis Malone Aquatic Center. And it's, uh, we've been, we framed them for you and I'm going to call you up, first is Raylin Andrews. All heart pen. Sofia Gomez. Jill Power. And Madison Shea. Okay, all right, so we'll give those two to Raylin. Wait, hi. Name? I'm not sure, we could have either put two in the same, but let's give her that one for pictures and I will find out where hers is.
Nadine.
Yeah, come get a pen.
Nadine.
Here you go.
Wonder if there's two in here? Okay, so now we just need a picture of all of you together with Josh, just show your things. Okay. Nice, thank you.
Good job, Nadine. I'll give Nadine a special shout-out, she taught my daughter Charlotte how to swim this winter, so thank you, Nadine, we practiced this weekend, so, thank you.
This is the night of presentations, um, one last, uh, announcement because June, in addition to all of the things we've already celebrated, is also Chronic Migraine Awareness Day and I'd like to ask Renetta to come forward to the podium, um, we've done this for, this is our second year doing this in recognition of so many people within our community who suffer from the genetic neurological disease that is, um, known as the migraines that are episodes, they are called attacks, they occur with at least eight attacks per month and they impact all the systems of the body with symptoms, including pain, nausea, sensitivity to light and sound, visual disturbances, chills and fatigue. It significantly impacts quality of life for a large number of our residents, so we'd like to bring some additional awareness to this and the recognition is for June twenty-ninth, which we are going to recognize in the City of Bristol as Chronic Migraine Awareness Day. Um, I do have a proclamation, I'd like to ask, um, our guests to come to the podium and I didn't know if you wanted to offer any comments, you don't have to, um, but you've been the, um, champion of this cause for a lot of people who share this affliction and I didn't know if you'd just like to say a few words.
Actually, I wasn't prepared.
It's okay.
To do a speech, but just to let you all know, on June twenty-first is Shades for Migraine Day.
Okay.
And they'd like you to wear a pair of shades and take a pic, take a picture, post it, send it to me, I'm fine with that, I do a collage, but there are a lot of people that are suffering with migraines and I've been fortunate enough to be on a lot of the, um, advocacy journey through Miles for Migraine, Chronic Migraine Awareness, American Migraine Foundation, so a lot of different ones and I was lucky enough to speak with Chief Gould and he's been actually putting facts on as well, so the more that we get the word out, we can end the stigma that it's just a headache.
Yep, so on behalf of Renetta and everyone else within the community, we are going to declare June twenty-ninth as that day and whereas eighty-five percent of the people with this disease are women, where depression and anxiety are common with this affliction and can cause individuals living with this disease to miss an average of sixty-three days of work, school, or family time over a three-month period. Migraine disease is the leading cause of disability amongst all neurological disorders and is often not properly diagnosed. So therefore, I, Ellen Zapposasou, and the city council hereby declare June twenty-ninth as Chronic Migraine Awareness Day and acknowledge the true struggle which individuals in our communities suffer from this debilitating disease and we will all participate on June twenty-first as well, so.
I forgot to introduce, this is my son Jalen, I made him come out with me today.
He's a big supporter when you have a headache, Renetta.
So why don't you come forward to get your proclamation and we can spread the word. Take a picture.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, our next item of business is the consent calendar, we have items five A through H tonight. Does anybody need to pull anything off from the consent calendar to discuss? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve? So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item six is reports and committee reports and the first is from the ordinance committee, which has four items.
Thank you, Your Honor, this deals with agenda items A, six A through D. The, uh, ordinance committee had four public hearings before our last meeting and the, um, resolutions presented tonight are recommendations from the ordinance committee. I hereby move to adopt the following amendments to the Bristol Code of Ordinances, Article Three, Public Dances, Section three dash thirty-two through three dash thirty-nine, Article Three, Air Pollution Control, Sections eleven dash thirty-one through eleven dash thirty-seven, Article Two, Licensing of Food Vendors, Section nine dash sixteen through nine dash forty-three, and Article One, in general, Sections sixteen dash five. Um, we present, as presented, uh, I further move that the city clerk publish said amendments and additions to the Code of Ordinances and that they become effective upon the expiration of fourteen days from. of 14 days from the date of their publication and a newspaper of general circulation in the City of Bristol.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
Mayor, if I may, the first, I don't want to say the wrong number, all but the last item are actually things we're taking out of the ordinances, things that are outdated, that we don't use anymore, or that the state has the authority over. So those things are being deleted from our ordinances. And the last item is giving the new park ambassadors enforcement authority for violations in our parks. And I think that's an important piece of their job. So I think that will make a difference hopefully this summer.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 6D is an update on the American Rescue Plan. We had our first meeting two weeks ago, and we are moving very quickly to determine parameters. The next meeting is tomorrow at 4:00 PM. It is open to the public, and there is also a Zoom link. It is my impression that we will most likely be working in subgroups for a portion of that meeting to ensure that we have compliance with some of the items that we are suggesting for potential funding. So those meetings will probably happen every other week for the next month or so, so that we can have some working groups get a handle on that. As the controller reported earlier in the evening, for right now, we have received half of our federal allocation, which is approximately $8 million, and we are going to anticipate receiving half of our county allocation, which is $5 million and change, which will give us roughly $13 million right now with the second half of those payments coming next spring. So there is some long-term and strategic planning that we're looking to do with that as well. The areas of interest continue to be economic stimulation and recovery, assistance to nonprofits through the social safety net, and the services that are provided through our community. And then obviously, if there are one-time expenses that could be done for city projects that we might not otherwise have the opportunity to fund. So that's where we are with that, and we look forward to having some additional updates in the ensuing few months. Did I miss anything, Councilman Proleski?
Nice job, ma'am.
Okay. Are there any other committee reports to come forward from the council, starting on my far right?
Yes.
I said brief council reports.
Always. I have the last school readiness report, and it is brief. The fire truck raffle for incoming kindergarten students is being reinstated. We didn't have it last year, obviously. And all children that are registered for kindergarten by June 14, which is the last day of school, are eligible for it. And the drawing will take place on June 21, and their winner will be announced that day. So to be able to take advantage of this opportunity, your child has to be fully registered, once again, by June 14. And the mayor, councilperson, Brittany Barney Calhoun and myself attended the story walk at Rockwell Park, which, excuse me, were you there as well, Mary?
No.
Okay.
It was a little too warm for me.
Yeah, but we toughed it out. And it was a really nice event. They set up pages of the book, and you read it as you walk with your child incrementally. And this was put together by grant manager Mary Alice Petraselli Timmick. The author of the children's book was there. Do you remember the title of the book, Mayor? Sorry to put you on the point.
Rio and Silas with Life.
There you go. Great. Well, and it's great. This started in Montpelier, Vermont in 2004, and hopefully, we're going to continue the tradition.
How many pages are on the book, Councilman Kelly?
I'm not sure. But that was relevant.
I really felt for the mascot, though. I mean, that was tough.
Mascot was hot.
They were hot.
In that suit, no doubt. I have a Board of Education report, which involves our student athletes that really performed well at the class meet recently. Young student athlete by the name of Victor Rosa won first place in the 200 and 100 meter. And in talking to one of his coaches, this kid is an exceptional athlete. He's going to play football in college, was here with the number one ranked basketball team as well. And he is so fast, he has a gear he hasn't even used yet. So watch for this kid, Victor Rosa, and he's got another year of football this coming year. A young man by the name of Nate DeAngelo came in second place in the 1600 meter and fifth place in the 3200 meter. And in doing so, he broke two 10-year school records. The 1600 meter record was owned by a young man by the name of Mike Dupre, and the 200 meter 10-year record was owned by a young man by the name of Connor Kelly. And in Bristol Eastern, Mackenzie Fitzsimmons came in second place in the javelin, and St. Paul Tyler Turner, second place in the long jump. And we have a group of athletes that are going to be participating in the state open championship, was supposed to be tomorrow. It's been moved to Thursday. And they are Salvatore Bosco from Bristol Central in the 400 meters. The 4x800 meter relay is Bristol Eastern Fiona Gallagher, Morris Seer, Victor Koshukowicz, thank you for the pronunciation, Councilman Proleski, and Avery Brackia. Shot put Crystal Rodriguez from Bristol Central, javelin Mackenzie Fitzsimmons from Bristol Eastern. On the boys' side, 100 meter Victor Rosa, 200 meter Victor Rosa, 1600 meter Nate DeAngelo, 3200 meter Nate DeAngelo, once again. High jump Frank E. Perini. You recognize that name, Councilmen?
I do.
Yes, you do. And triple jump Tre'Shawn Blair, javelin Jacob Salinas from Bristol Central. That is it. That's an impressive list of athletes, and that bodes well to our athletes and our coaches here in town. Thank you.
The Blues are looking for a new commentator tomorrow night. Are you available?
Do you think I've got it?
You got it. You got it, yeah.
You're a natural.
Councilman Hunt, can you top that?
You know, no. But I do have something. I'm happy that mine isn't going to seem that long now. The Energy Commission has a few things we need to keep an eye on. We have some microgrid projects, two that have been identified, one in Center Square and one at 89, 890 Middle Street. We recently applied for a brick grant. That's the Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Grant with the Noghtuck Valley Conference of Governments. This $600,000 grant, when approved, will give us the money for planning and development under the Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan. The Senator Chris Murphy's office is helping us push this through so that we can get this as soon as possible. The track, we're tracking a CGA House bill in Washington 6525, an act concerning the solicitation of the new fuel cell electricity generation projects. It's been passed by the House and forwarded to the Senate on May 26. We have a favorable report so far as it's going to be voted on the Senate maybe even today. And our local legislative delegation has been pushing this. The interesting thing about this is we're allowed two projects of up to $30 million each. Now, I don't think our projects are going to reach that level, but if approved, we will be in line to fund our microgrid projects that we have on the docket, two of them for this year. So that's very exciting, and expect to hear more on that in the near future. On another topic, last year, we had a solar-for-all program, and this year, they're looking to do it again for round two. So the Connecticut Green Bank and Posigen are getting together to review the results from last year. Last year, we got solar energy for 100 homes, and that's very successful. And so we're looking to do that again this year. The last thing I'd like to mention is we're currently evaluating the next phase of our energy plan, developing commercial, institutional, and industrial phase approach, reviewing the Board of Ed, Water and Sewer, and other institutional opportunities, and reviewing working with CPACE. That's the Connecticut Property Assessed Clean Energy for commercial owners, and with rebates and financing. So this committee is very, very busy, and I think there's going to be a lot to report on this in the coming months. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Rosato?
When you said brief, I thought you were referring to me, because usually I'm the long-winded one. So mine will be sure, I think.
I'm not sure you're the long-winded one.
Oh, okay. Wow. For a minute, I thought I had the complex. Okay. On Friday, June 4, the Veterans Strong Council had their yearly salute dinner. There were 15 honorees from Eastern, Central, and St. Paul. Upon graduation, they'll be looking forward to their enlistment dates in the U.S. military. They were recognized by the council and given words of encouragement, as well as tips for boot camp by drill sergeants Tim Gamash and Dave Carrillo. Again, congratulations. We wish you a safe journey in your military career. The banners are up on the boulevard, and they look fantastic. Thank you all who contributed to that. I don't know if you had the opportunity to take a drive down there, but I guess I'm hearing they should just be a little bit bigger, but it looks pretty good down there. They were placed at the back end due to the bridge closures for this year, this year, these next couple months. So that's why they're on the Napa side coming in. For police, just want to say congratulations to the Bristol Police Department for being awarded Tier 3 accreditation. Chief, job well done. And a special thank you goes to Jim Pelletier, our accreditation officer, who has overseen the process since 2014, when the Bristol Police Department received Tier 1. In Chief Gould's famous words, "It's one thing to say that your agency is striving towards excellence. It's even better to show proof. It means that we are transparent and in pursuit of excellence. We are willing to open our doors and be examined, scrutinized, and even criticized when necessary by an independent commission." I had to put that in there. We'd like to welcome Bristol's newest officers, Michael Figaroa, Alonso Redondo. Bristol Police Department is really coming together in their commitment to diversity and inclusion, and we wish the recruits well. They're currently at the academy. The torch run will, for the Special Olympics, will take place June 17. Be on the lookout, and let's cheer on our fellow participants as they carry the torch through Bristol. And that will be the 17th that they'll be running through, correct, Chief? Okay. This is a little bit, this is in regards to an earlier recognition. So I just want to say congratulations to Deputy Superintendent, oh, no, this is, no, not this part. Congratulations to Deputy Superintendent Sarah Larson. She passed her Certified Parks and Recreation Exam with the National Recreation and Parks Association and is now certified as professional. Sarah joins aquatics supervisor Jamie Klout and Superintendent Maderos as nationally certified professionals. Parks and Rec is really coming along and putting a lot of effort into that department. And again, I'd like to thank Josh Maderos and his staff for this evening's earlier recognition, here we are, of the emergency actions that took place at the GMAT Aquatic Center. This is, folks, this is a true example of when investing pays off. Whether it means investing in qualified leaders, investing in training and education, the payoff is far greater, especially when the end result is in now saving lives. So we really have to take into consideration the whole picture of everything that when we sit above here before you and make decisions on quality of life and things to that nature. So-
Buying AED machines.
Yeah, absolutely. We got a connection for that, I think.
Yeah.
Ryan Gomes, let's look him up.
Are you all set? Councilman Proleski?
Thank you, Your Honor. I truly have a short one here. The, I want to give you an update on the Memorial Boulevard Inter District Magnet School Building Committee. The committee continues to meet monthly. The agenda and the link website, or link for Zoom is on both the Board of Education website and the city website. What's really interesting to me, anyway, is that the topics that we're discussing now are more finish detail topics, such as furniture, buying furniture and fixtures, and mock-up classrooms, and, you know, technology and finishing detail. It's really starting to look like a classroom from the planning, or a school building from the planning side. This past month, there's been a lot of work on the site, driveways and the parking areas and the West, West Hurley Side addition is moving along. We've already spent $18 million to date, and our building allowances and our contingencies remain strong, and it seems like we're still on time. That's it. Thank you.
Councilman Barney?
Yes, Your Honor, just a brief report. I just went to the Bristol Public Library Board of Directors meeting yesterday, and the director of the library is sharing that they are going to start in-person events again. So I thought I'd share that out with the public, especially considering we've had some really hot days. So if you're looking for somewhere cool to hang out and do something fun that makes you feel like, you know, this thing is finally ending, you can check out their calendar. They are trying to roll out in-person events safely. The library's been really cautious about how they do these things. So on Thursday evening, the No Smoke Kings will be at the library to return to their coffee house, but it's at 6:30. I guess they're a rock and roll band with Elvis, from everything, from Elvis to the Eagles and in between. So check it out. There is limited spaces, and registration is required. So you can RSVP to the library. And kind of, this is stretching the library committee report a little bit, but I wanted to share this because I had a really great experience a couple weeks ago, taking my in-laws, who have lived in Bristol for 30 years, to the Carousel Museum for the first time with my daughter, because it was a really rainy day, and my sister-in-law was in town. So we checked out the Carousel Museum. As a reminder, admission's free for Bristol residents at the Carousel Museum, and I think Terryville, too. So you just let them know, show them your license at the door, and they'll allow you to come in for free. The Fire Museum is upstairs, so that's how I'm also still connecting it to my committee reports, because I am on the board, the Fire Board as well. So there's a connection. And this weekend is Connecticut Open House Week, or Day. So you can also check out different museums throughout the state of Connecticut for a reduced cost, including the Clock and Watch Museum. And I'm going to bring it back to the library one more time, because they actually have free museum passes. So if, in case you didn't know that, a part of your library membership also gets you access to these free passes, like the Beardsley Zoo, the Connecticut Science Center, places that are really fun to bring families, but can be really expensive, especially if you have a child that begs for a toy every time you leave anywhere, including the grocery store. So I think that you should check those out. It's a great way to spend time with your family in these hot summer days between the library or the local museums. Thank you.
Councilman Ford, here.
I have no committee reports. Sorry.
Mary for the win. The next item is the unfinished business of our COVID update. And I'm, this is going to be the last COVID update that I make, unless something changes. We have now achieved gray level, which most of the state has. We are less than five infection rate per 100,000 for a population. It's going very well. Our vaccination rate is very high for Bristol. We are continuing to deploy mobile vaccine centers from Griffin Health in conjunction with the State Department of Public Health, as well as the community health centers. And now, the Bristol Burlington Health District is also deploying mobile basis vaccinations in key neighborhoods, events in the parks. And we are going to continue to chip away at the people who are either waiting to get their vaccine because they're watching, you know, looking for science and FDA reports, or were looking to get past certain events that they didn't want to get sick for. We hear that a lot. So we're still out there. It's very easy to get a vaccine. Walgreens and CVS are doing walk-in vaccinations. You can also walk in at the Community Health Center on North Main Street, and you can call the mayor's office or the All Heart hotline at any time, and we can tell you where instantly you can go in town to get a vaccination at these pop-up clinics. So I think it's just appropriate to pause for a minute. It has been an extremely long 15 months, but I would be remiss without commending the great work of all of our city employees to get through that crisis, the ones that came to work every day and continue to be on the front lines of delivering critical services. So this will be the last report, unless something has to happen. But I think most of the activity will now flow to the American Rescue Plan and what we're now going to be dealing with as the results of COVID. So-
Can I just add one thing, Your Honor? Something I've heard on the news recently is that many of our colleges are going to require entering students to be vaccinated. So I just want to give sort of a push to our young people, because I do think our young people think they're very resilient. They're that way when they drive their cars and everything else. And I just want them to think about the fact that if they are heading off to college in the fall, that that may be a requirement, and it might make sense to think about that sooner rather than later and get it done.
True point. Are there any other unfinished business items that anybody would like to bring to the table? Okay, we're going to move on to new business. We have one that is listed on the agenda, and then we have one that we're going to bring to the table. The first one is, under the economic development activity, we need to authorize myself or the acting mayor to execute the Second Amendment to the Purchase and Sale Agreement for Lot 2 Southeast Business Business Park between the City of Bristol and Brown Holdings LLC. Brown Holdings LLC is the company that is BHF Logistics, which is buying Lot 2. They are in the process, they just got approved at the Economic and Community Development Commission for their site plan, based on the covenants of the industrial park there. They're working through a couple of other issues. So this is simply just an extension of their purchase and sales agreement, so that they continue to check off those boxes.
Move to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then the other new business item that I'd like to bring to the table is the, we have an opportunity for a grant for Comprehensive Opioid Stimulant and Substance Abuse Site-Based Program. So we've had a working group consisting of our grants administrator, Bristol Health officials, and the police department and myself, where, and the health district, that we are going to apply for this grant. The summary reads that the Bristol Police Department and the Bristol Burlington Health District, in partnership with Bristol Hospital, established the City of Bristol Recovery Alliance, that's our COBRA program that you're all familiar with, to address opioid overdoses and the ongoing problem of substance abuse in our community. Bristol has had a high rate of overdoses occurring in recent years, and it ranked number two in suicides within the state of Connecticut. So the project description is that we are going to use this grant, if received, to build upon our existing recovery support services for survivors of opioid overdose and/or individuals struggling with substance abuse. This will include increased marketing and outreach to those with substance abuse issues and their families, targeting educational program for school-aged children, additional support for the police and EMS diversion to medication-assisted treatment, and the annual expenses of the Bristol Burlington Health District's mobile outreach van. So this would be a three-year grant, and no match is required by the city. So the total request is going to be for $300,000 or $100,000 annually. So that's what we're asking to bring to the table for the BGA Fiscal Year 21 Comprehensive Grant. Is there a motion?
Motion to bring it to the table.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to appro, oh, sorry. Motion to approve.
Okay. And now, the requested motion is to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute any and all documents or contracts associated with an application for a BJA Fiscal Year 21 CASA Grant of $300,000 from the U.S. Department of Justice, and to refer the matter to the Board of Finance for any necessary action.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have any resignations?
We have a resignation from Michelle Crowley, and that's from the Bristol Historic District Commission.
Okay. Right, so then, moving on to appointments, we have several. The first is to appoint Greg Hahn to replace Dave Proleski for a three-month term to September of 2021 as acting mayor.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have three appointments to the Commission for Persons with Disabilities. We are going to look to reappoint Joseph Kralakowski, Daniel McCary, and Kristen Granatek for three-year terms to June of 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. For the Youth Commission, we have four reappointments. They are Cory Nagel, the private youth member, Deborah All, the citizen member, Karen Hintz, the citizen member, and Ryan Broderick, the school system member. These are for three-year terms to June of 2024.
Moved, so moved.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. For the Zoning Commission, a motion to reappoint David White for a three-year term to June of 2024.
So moved.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And for the Board of Finance, to reappoint Orlando Calfee for a four-year term to June of 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And to appoint Glenn Heiser to replace Cheryl Tebow for a four-year term to June of 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And please have a letter sent to Ms. Tebow acknowledging her years of service. Let's see. Leaving vacancies that I'm looking to fill. There is Freedom of Information Advisory Board. There is a vacancy there. We have now a vacancy on the Bristol Historic District Commission. I am looking for someone to serve on the Inland Wetlands Commission. And a question to Councilman Proleski, the Personnel Advisory Committee. Did the Ordinance Committee establish that?
Yes, we did.
Okay, so if we were so inclined, we could have two electors serving on an advisory committee to the Personnel Advisory Committee. So we could look for some people who might be interested in that. And there is one more appointment tonight, and that is to reappoint Diane Waldron to a four-year term and contract, carrying her through to June of 2025.
We have a motion.
So moved.
Is there a motion?
We have a motion, Your Honor. Very happy to do this. Your Honor, I hereby move that the City of Bristol enter a written employment agreement with the comptroller, Diane Waldron, for a four-year term per the attached employment contract agreement, and that the mayor, Ellen Zaplo Sasso, or acting mayor, be authorized to sign said agreement. I further move that this matter be referred to the Board of Finance and the Retirement Board for informational purposes.
Second.
Discussion?
We're lucky to have her, Your Honor.
You were on the hiring panel, weren't you?
I was. I'm glad you brought that up. I was, yep. She's done a great job.
Yes, yes, she has. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Diane, and thank you for all the hard work. Okay. I will turn the agenda over to our Town and City Clerk for Agenda Items 11 through 20. I would like to note, as we turn to the second page, that we are going to be removing Item 18, as it is not yet ready for discussion.
Item 11, Approval of Organizations That Applied For 2021 Neighborhood Assistance Act Tax Credit Program and to Forward Applications to Connecticut Department of Revenue Services for Consideration.
Is there a motion?
So, second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 12, Resolution Regarding Approval of the Revised 2021-2022 Annual Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant and to refer to the Board of Finance, and there is a resolution to read.
I have that, Your Honor. Be it hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, that the Revised 2021-2022 Annual Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant, as approved by the Economic and Community Development Board on June 3, 2021, is hereby approved, reflecting an increase in the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development allocation in the amount of $9,637 to be added to the funding for the residential rehabilitation program, and that the mayor or acting mayor is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents relating to this grant, including final agreements, and to submit all required documents to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for its approval and allocation of funds. Be it further resolved that this, that the Revised Annual Action Plan be referred to the Board of Finance for action regarding the appropriation of funds, subject to final approval by HUD.
Your Honor, I need to recuse myself.
Okay. Is there any discussion on Agenda Item 11? Hearing none, all in favor?
Resolution.
Oh, sorry, roll call.
Yes.
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 Mayor votes yes, and let the record show there is one recusal from Councilman Proleski. Okay, moving on.
Item 13, Resolution Regarding Approval to Submit Application to U.S. Department of Justice 2021 COPS Hiring Program to Hire Five New Police Officer Positions and to refer to the Board of Finance, and there is a resolution to read.
I have the resolution, Your Honor.
Okay.
Be it hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, that the filing of a grant application under U.S. Department of Justice 2021 COPS Hiring Program to hire five new police officer positions is hereby approved, and that the mayor, Ellen Zaplo Sasso, or acting mayor, and the chief of police or acting chief of police are hereby authorized to execute such application and any and all other documents relating to the application funding grant, including but not limited to any final funding award grant documents. Be it further resolved that this matter be referred to the Board of Finance for any necessary action.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? So I think it's important for everyone to understand that these would be five new positions, which would add to our existing force of our current manpower, which is 122. If we were to get this grant, it would give us money to hire five additional officers, which would bring us to 127. And if anybody sees Chief Gould in the hallway, doing his job here for him. I'm trying to think if there's something else we talked about at Police Commission for this.
Maybe explaining that the total number we have is 124, but we're looking into, oh, 122.
It's 122. So we haven't added a new police officer to the ranks. We've only added one in the last probably five or seven years. We used to be at a higher rate, but through budget cuts, the department has had a reduction in workforce. And I think when you see quality-of-life complaints, like from the Lipitos tonight, you see that those types of issues, we do not have the opportunity to do special detail, special projects, because of the call volume. So we are going call-to-call, pretty much all first and second shift, and even third shift is pretty busy. So an addition of five new police officers that were paid for through this grant over a period of time would help with this tremendously. So that is the reason that the Police Commission has endorsed this grant application and why you see it before you tonight. But I think it's important, since we've been struggling to stay at 122, that you all understand that it's not to backfill to get us to 122. It's 122 plus five.
Yeah, I recall the last year when we were kind of talking about the police department and having some informational meetings, that there was a lot of discussion about the way that you kind of determine the right number of officers for the community, and that we've always kind of historically been, like, very close to meeting that, but usually struggling to meet that parameter. So I think this sounds like an appropriate measure.
This grant doesn't come along very often, so we decided to go for it when it was offered again this year.
Your Honor, are we at full complement, 122?
I think we're only, there's two that are in the academy. We just did a lateral hire of a certified police officer from another department. And so I believe we are only down one, if I recall from.
I think so.
Yeah. So we're at 121 right now.
Because we were at like 117, 120.
We were down to 115 right after the holidays. So, and we do anticipate some additional retirements over the course of the next 12 months. So we're obviously always continually trying to do that. Our list is exhausted. We had a police entry-level list that was formed and certified in January with only about 34 names on it. We only got to interview, I think, a handful of people. Many people didn't make it through psychological or the background or the chief's review, and one was deployed. So we had only a few hires off of that list. So entry level is forming again. And so anybody interested in becoming a Bristol police officer will have the opportunity to take the written test in the next few weeks. So we're constantly reformulating those lists. And the lateral, the lateral hiring process has yielded a couple of very good officers as well from other departments.
Thank you for the background.
Okay, so this is a resolution. Are there any other questions before we do a roll call vote? Hearing none, we'll start on my far left.
Yes.
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 And the mayor votes yes. Okay.
Item 14, Resolution Regarding Approval to Submit Application to U.S. Department of Justice 2021 Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant for 25 new or replacement bulletproof vests and to refer to the Board of Finance, and this is a resolution also, Your Honor.
I have that, Your Honor.
Okay, go ahead.
Be it hereby resolved that the filing of an application for the 2021 Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant to the U.S. Department of Justice is hereby approved, and that the mayor, Ellen Zaplo Sasso, or acting mayor and chief of police or acting chief of police are hereby authorized to execute such application and any and all other documents relating to this finding grant, including but not limited to any final funding grant documents, and that the previous execution and filing of said application by the chief of police are hereby ratified. Be it further resolved that this matter be referred to the Board of Finance for any necessary action.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote on my far right.
Yes.
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 Mayor votes yes. Resolution is adopted.
Item 15, Approval of Contract 2P21-36B, Owners' Representative, Project Manager for Renovations at Bristol City Hall to Colliers Project Leaders USA NE LLC for $474,700, refer to Corporation Counsel, and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute any and all documents necessary.
So moved.
Motion is made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 16, Award of Contract 2C21-79, Retaining Wall Replacement at Memorial Boulevard to Trademark Contractors LLC for $1,508,140, and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute any and all documents necessary.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Your Honor, this is for the veteran's side, right? So I did meet with them, and they have our blessing to move forward with any actions necessary to complete the project.
So to Councilman Rosado's point, this might include cutting some of the memorial trees that were planted in memory of the World War I soldiers. So we are looking at alternatives, but it does appear that some of those trees may need to be removed, and then we would do a replanting. So the Veterans Council is aware.
And primarily, the cutting of the trees are because of OSHA compliance when we are excavating with the five-foot rule.
Yeah, they most likely would not survive based on their root systems being kind of tied in with the wall, so.
Can I ask, would it be worth exploring if like, someone like maybe Dusty Dude Dude would, would works or like someone local might be able to like repurpose that wood? I don't know what kind of tree it is and if it would be.
They're pinned.
The Boulevard is very, very sacred grounds to the, the veterans as it is.
Yeah.
And, you know, they're, they're kind of, we want to be very careful with them and respectful of, of some of their.
I, I just meant like repurposing it as a memory item, like for the veterans.
Like a wooden bench or something that could be placed in the area.
After the trees are cut down?
After the tree's been cut, yeah.
Using the trees.
Oh.
Yes.
That's something.
So that they're not just.
If you want to explore, you, you can.
Maybe we should think about whether there could be benches down in the Blue Star Garden, something down there. Okay, yeah, we can look into that.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you, Brittany.
Let me know. Sorry, just, I've seen a lot of posts from them. They do a great job and that might be a nice way to honor those, those trees and the people that they represented.
There is significance because each of those trees have a monument next to it. So that's, the significance there is to have a tree replanted with expectations of that, so.
Oh, I think they should still do that, just.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 17, amendment of contract 2P1541, professional services toward replacement of Memorial Boulevard Bridge with Wengel, McDonnell &amp; Costello Incorporated for $254,481.33 for a revised contract value of $554,481.33, and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute any and all documents necessary.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor, is this, as the larger project is approved, is this to accommodate that larger project?
Yes, yes. We're gonna, we're doing the larger, the entire retaining wall, not just the section that tumbled into the, into the river. So all of the contracts need to be adjusted accordingly.
Thank you.
This one says the bridge, Your Honor.
Oh, same thing. We're doing the, the larger bridge piece now as it goes behind Modern Cabinet and then as it goes toward Downs, based on where the new aesthetically designed bridge is going to have to sit. Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 18 is off the agenda.
And 19 is the last executive session regarding docket number X07HHD6084696S, City of Bristol versus TSKP Studio LLC et al., and it's the HVAC system at Green Hill School.
Hello, Attorney Clift.
Hello. Attending the executive session will be my staff, Corporation Counselors, and we may be joined by Attorney Lawrence Rosenthal by phone, but I'm not sure. I will let you know when I come out. And that'll be it.
Okay. All right, so now we need a motion to go into executive session.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're going to reconvene back into public session and please let the record show that there were no votes taken in executive session. Are there any motions to come before?
Yes, Your Honor, I have a motion. I move that the City of Bristol approve a full and final settlement in the matter of the City of Bristol versus TSKP Studio LLC et al., docket number X07HHD6084696S, HVAC System at Green Hill School, for the sum of $1,200,000, and that the Corporation Counsel, Wayland Dale Clift or his designee, execute any and all documents necessary to affect the purposes of this settlement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Your Honor, I'll start by saying that I will be voting no for this settlement. This is a case, as we all know, involving the HVAC system in the relatively new Green Hill School. We've had significant repairs that we've had to make already to that system. And we've established a committee to deal with the probable replacement of the entire HVAC system. So it's a significant cost to the city. And I don't think the offer made by the parties involved is enough to compensate us, to compensate the students and teachers at Green Hill School for the aggravation they've had as well. And so while I understand the legal position we were in and that a settlement may be in our best interest, I was confident that we could have won an appeal of this case if the trial had not gone the way we wanted. And while that would have taken several years, and certainly, you know, is a gamble, I, I believe we should have taken that gamble, so I will be voting no.
Your Honor, may I?
Yes.
You know, I have absolute respect for Councilwoman Four Year's point of view. Everything she said is absolutely correct in my point of view as an attorney. The travesty here is that, based on the economics and the numbers, that if we were to continue this lawsuit, I'm afraid that all the extra monies that would, the state would have to expend would probably exceed what we could get in terms of either a future settlement or an award, based on some of the preliminary rulings from the bench towards the, the beginning of this trial. I'm not confident, but Mary, you, every, her experience with the state of Connecticut and complex litigation swayed me when we spoke about this over the weekend. And she, everything she said is truthful, but from the economic standpoint, even though she's absolutely right in theory and everything about us not getting what we deserve, I'm going to go the other way.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the settlement, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, I'm going to vote affirmatively, so that will indicate six yes votes and one no vote for the record. Okay. Is there any other business to come before the council? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
One, one no vote for adjournment by Councilman Barney. Pretty, not shabby for 8:37.